Pledge of Service, Pledge of Legion.
Pledge of Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We, number three, here the approval of the agenda tonight. There will be, uh, there will be, uh, an amendment to the agenda. Um, uh, and we need, we need this approved, right?
Yeah, so it'll be, uh, we'll need to add an amending resolution number twenty twenty-three C titled Annual Appointments and Designations to Add Travis Christensen to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I will need a motion in a second to get that added to new business section D for tonight.
I make a motion to, can I go ahead? I'm in the middle of discussion. I make a motion to add Travis Christensen.
No.
No, 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 no. Uh, the amended resolution number two zero two three, Charlie.
All right. We have a motion to add the amended resolution number twenty twenty-three C, uh, to the, um, to the agenda tonight. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. On the, uh, consent agenda. Questions? We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. All right, public comment. Somebody from the public that would like to make any, uh, comments, petitions, requests, uh, communications? Um, you can come up here, which doesn't look like we have any as of right now. Perfect. All right. Right on time.
Not a second to spare.
It was a long drive. The, the winds picked up, didn't they? All right, so right now we are, we do have a presentation, um, for the final utility rate study, uh, by Vicky from Abdo Financial Solutions. And, uh, the information is in the packet. Has a nice yellow picture on it for us, so. Thank you, Vicky, for coming in tonight, appreciate it.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and how's it going for having me back? Um, so today I am here to present to you the final report on the utility rate study that we conducted. Um, so I'm actually just gonna walk you through a couple of key pieces of the report in the new packet. Um, so just starting out, I'll have you turn over to page four. And this just highlights at a high level some of the data sets that we, um, considered and the basic assumptions that outlined our work. So at the top you can see, um, how many, uh, accounts that the city is currently operating. Um, for water on the top, sewer on the bottom. And so this information was used in our data build. Um, something, um, unique or, um, of note, I guess, is if you look under the large graph, you'll see what the average, um, what the average revenues for the different property types are. So again, at the top with commercial, um, you can see that that average revenue of sixteen, um, or excuse me, usage, um, that average usage of sixteen point, um, six for commercial. But then drop down to the bottom side for commercial and you see that average usage, um, at fifty-five hundred. Well, the difference there really, um, is just that we have a major or significant, um, industrial user for sewer that, um, doesn't have their billing through the utility billing system, the billing is done separately. And so that's why you see those differences in the averages between water and sewer. And that's explained for you on the top of page five as well. And so when we met last time, um, we talked through a couple of different, um, builds of the data, right? We talked through a couple of scenarios that incorporated utilizations of ARPA, a couple of scenarios that, um, uh, set aside use of ARPA for some of the capital improvement projects the city was contemplating. Um, and so ultimately the city council selected a scenario they wanted to go with for water and a scenario that you wanted to go with for sewer. And then we talked about how, um, how we wanted to adjust rates over the five-year period. And so as I move now through pages six and through the rest of the report, just know that this is all built around the two assumptions that the council elected to lead with. So then moving over to the top of page six, um, it talks about the, uh, rate assumptions for the next five years for water. So just starting out at the top, you'll see that for the first year of implementation, which will be twenty twenty-three, the percentage increase that is estimated for the change is between two and thirty-five percent. Now, that's quite a wide range. Um, and the reason for that is because with this new, um, with the rate study, the city's going to be moving to a slightly different structure for water. Right now we have one consumption charge per thousand. But I mentioned to the city council when we last met that the DNR has recommended that you move to water conservation tiers. Um, and so essentially this is to encourage water conservation. And so we've, we've proposed different tiers, um, to promote folks to try to stay on the lower end of those tiers, right? There are different ways they can, um, conserve their water use. So as you move up to each different tier, um, users could experience an increase in the amount they're paying per thousand. And so that's why there's a, a slightly larger, uh, range for the rate increases projected for twenty twenty-three. Moving past that first year though, folks will see anywhere between a five and a two percent increase through twenty twenty-seven. Um, switching then down to the sewer side of things, um, that same philosophy on water conservation rates doesn't apply on the sewer side of things, of course. Um, but there is an element that we'll talk about a little bit later this evening after we get through the rate study. Um, but we will have sewer increases ranging from fourteen down to seven percent over the next five years. And again, this is all based around the city's need to establish a target cash balance in those utility funds, which is, um, six months working capital, one year of debt service, and then also enough to meet your capital replacement needs. And so that's what those rate increases are setting you up for. So on page seven, this shows that same information in a slightly different way. Um, on the top, it shows you those tiers that I talked about. So zero to three thousand gallons, three thousand to six thousand gallons, and then six thousand gallons plus. And it shows you based on what a typical residential property uses for consumption, what the impact would look like for each of the years presented. And then the same thing on the bottom. Just shows you what the rate chart would be for the next five years and then what the impact to a typical residential user could be. Just feel free to stop me if I'm moving to you if you have any questions. On page eight, we just have a couple helpful charts that kind of show you how the ins and outs of the funds are comprised. But the one on the bottom, um, um, speaks a little bit better to that target cash projection that I was talking about. So you see in twenty twenty-two, our projected cash balance in the water fund is much lower than where we need that target cash to be. So that black line across the top, or at least on my printed copy, it is, it's running out of ink, um, shows you where that target cash needs to be. And you see that by twenty twenty-seven, those things intersect. It'll be the same way on the sewer side of things. So flipping now over to page nine, you can see that there's a gap right now in between what our cash balance in that sewer fund is and where that target cash needs to be. But as we get five years out into this plan, the two will intersect. We start to build up the target cash.
Why does that dip down from, or, uh, two thousand twenty-four compared to two thousand twenty-six?
Great question. So that target cash is comprised of working capital, which that should probably just grow, right? If that's six months of operating expenses, costs are going up on average five percent per year. Um, capital, we built that around a five-year average, so that should be constant. What's changing there is debt. So there must be some debt falling off in twenty twenty-four, so that target cash need will be reduced.
Perfect.
Um, page ten then, this is new information really, now that, um, council elected scenarios you wanted to work with. We pulled in some data from some other communities just to kind of see how your water and sewer rates would compare. I have to preface with, with utility rate studies, it's never apples to apples. Some communities have ponds to treat their sewage, some communities have wastewater treatment facilities. Some cities have high nitrate and have to treat water, some cities don't have that. So it's never apples to apples, but at least gives you an idea of some communities and how lessenters rates fit. And then there's an illustration on page eleven for sewer. But then probably, um, most reflective is on page twelve where it shows the combined water and sewer. And you can see that, you know, as we look throughout all of these, lessenters kind of right in the middle. So again, just to kind of recap, um, the major recommendations that Abdo had for the city through this process is, one, move to a conservation rate tier on the water side of things, because that's suggested by the DNR. Um, two, um, you know, we kind of talked a little bit about we should always be doing those inflationary adjustments. And for a bit here, we'll be doing something higher than that to get that target cash where it needs to be. But as you go on, um, throughout the future, always consider doing those inflationary adjustments to water and sewer. It avoids having to do a big, um, uptick at one point in time to catch up. Um, we'll talk about a couple of additional recommendations after you receive the results of the rate study tonight. Um, but otherwise, um, all of this is built on the five-year CIP that, um, the council received at our last meeting and we've discussed. Should you have any major changes to capital plans, big projects, debt issuance that comes into play, um, any big assumptions changing on that front, we'd strongly suggest that you revisit, um, this, right? Because, um, your future needs will be changing and so the cash flow needs may change. But outside of that, I open the front door, I'll see what happens.
This has been, this is great, and I have no questions. Um, this is, like we've said in the past, uh, well overdue that we've, that we've, uh, that we put this together. And it's been a recommendation from Abdo for a while as well, so it's something that we needed to get done and it's good to get this done. Any other comments from the council?
Oh, thank you for a very thorough job.
So I kind of wanted to touch a little bit too, is now that we've got this, um, you know, study done that, um, in the future, um, uh, I'm working on and have been working on an overall fee schedule that's got all the city's fees. And then it'll have this tiered system that was kind of approved at the last for those scenarios for water, water and sewer, and those will be coming. But aside from just getting that component of it done and getting the residents out there in a public hearing to adopt the fee schedule, there's gonna be an implementation side of this as well. Um, and we're gonna use Abdo's services a little bit to help us, um, fine tune our, uh, utility billing system. It's got way more services in there than it really needs, we really only have a handful of services. But the way the system was set up, um, years back, um, there's a, there's a, a service for every little thing. And the, the system has the ability to do multipliers, um, for different rate structures and it makes it a lot easier. So there's gonna be an implementation part of this. And there's also gonna be, uh, on the side of myself, a public outreach. Because as it sits right now, the city currently does an EDU program where it kind of gives discounts to a lot, and that's equivalency dwelling unit that gives discounts to a lot of, um, businesses out there that have got, um, like apartment complexes and things of that nature. And we're gonna work together and look at Met Council's, um, matrix for, um, how we should be charging out for apartment complexes, for assisted living facilities, for any of those, uh, users out there that maybe we're not getting the appropriate amount of sewer, um, EDUs on, where, you know, if they're an industry that puts a lot of oils, fats, grease, grime, you know, we need to be looking at all those users out there and make sure we're appropriately applying those charges to them. So this is gonna be a phased-in approach, um, you know, kind of with the help of Abdo and, and, and helping city staff put that in. So that's just kind of where we're, where we're gonna go from there. So in the next probably meeting, look at a first iteration of ordinance for a fee schedule. And then as I work towards the goal, then we'll, we'll get more fine tuned on how we're gonna kind of really implement this and have good public outreach so everyone kind of knows what's going on.
Got a question. Um, so if we were in the future to adopt the tiered structure, so our current system is set up for that where people would get billed at those different tiers?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. Yeah, the program we use for, uh, utility billing is a pretty robust program and it's got all the functionality that we need to do it. Um, unfortunately, um, it's just, it's, uh, I think as throughout the years as things change, um, more account codes kept getting added, um, and it just needs a good cleanup to kind of bring it back to basics and to have those multipliers in there and bring back the service rates, just water, sewer, refus. Um, right now there's like somewhere in the vicinity of eighty to ninety accounts, kind of codes that are in that utility and it is, we don't need that many because it's got the, it's got the functionality to do what we wanted it to do.
Anything else? Nothing, all right. Thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate you. All right, reports of officers, ports, portments, EDA report, Mr. Evans.
Uh, I have nothing, uh, to report on the EDA from Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I got just a question for Mr. Evans. Hold on, a question and comment. I saw Winko finally put out that, uh, sign.
Yes.
Looks pretty nice out there. So they said they're going to, if I recall correctly, they're gonna put like city events on there also?
Uh, they have yet to tell me any of that information. They might have talked to Cory a little bit about what their kind of idea was, but, you know, that had to get worked through a condition use permit. So I know Cory worked on the majority of that.
Uh-huh, looks really good out there.
Yes, they did a great job. All right, planning and zoning, Cory.
Cory's not here tonight, he's got his, um, township supervisor duties this evening. Uh, but there is going to be, uh, another Winko, um, conditional use permit that they're applying for, and there's gonna be a public hearing on April, uh, fourth here, uh, at seven PM, and they're gonna be putting in a nine-thousand gallon, uh, liquid nitrogen tank. So that will be coming and then they'll have their meeting and then they'll look to get final council approval then at our April council meeting.
Does it see you be?
Uh, yes, this would be another condition use permit.
Any questions? Thank you, Dan. All right, liquor store report. Becky, how we doing?
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Our February twenty twenty-three sales were eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. In February of twenty twenty-two, sales were seventy-seven thousand, twenty-eight dollars and one cent. So we're up nine thousand dollars, eighty-seven cent, nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. Uh, we had a record month for gambling in February. I don't know the exact numbers, but per PALL factor, we deposited over sixty thousand dollars and our run check will be over ten thousand dollars. So that is wonderful. Um, we've decided to change our daily specials around a little bit. So instead of two-for-ones four times a week, we now do it once a week. Um, just to give you a little, um, insight of that, in February of twenty twenty-two, we comped twenty-five hundred dollars approximately. And this year we only comped five hundred and thirty-four dollars. So that has saved us quite a bit of money. And with changing the other specials too, we saved over eight hundred and forty-two dollars in discounts from February of this year, from February of twenty twenty-two to February of this year. So made some good changes there. Um, February recap, we had an extremely successful month. We had live music by Mike David and the Angels, then live music by Shenanigans. We had a successful chili and soup contest and the end of the year football drawing. We also had a puffer tournament and then dart league is always very busy on Tuesday nights. Um, March so far, we've had a very successful month with the St. Patrick's Day festivities. Um, we made eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-nine cents with five thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and one cent coming from the bar. So, um, we made, um, sorry, I think I made a typo. So yes, uh, we're up about three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the prior year and that is good considering the weather and everything. So there's a lot of factors with that. Um, it was a busy Saturday, even though with this cold and snow and then four playing, playing at the Legion always takes away a lot of people. Um, but we had no problems the entire day and night and it was very fun and a lot of compliments. Uh, coming up this Friday to still celebrate St. Patrick's Day, we have live music by Todd Yendra. Then on Saturday, we have a meat raffle at two and a puffer tournament coming up on Saturday, March twenty-fifth. Then April eighth, we'll have our customer appreciation day, which will be really fun with a meat raffle, live music by Krista Bowman and by Gary West. And he has played at the Grand Ole Opry in Nashville, so that should bring in a really good crowd. Uh, we are also in the process of finding a new POS system and Dan and I have been in touch about this. So we're just kind of in the beginning. Um, and right now we use four different companies, which is Restaurant Manager, Shift Four, BNG, and Casia. And I mean, four different companies by, like, our credit card processing, our, um, our technical support and then another support system and so on and so on. And we've had a lot of problems with these companies the last couple of months. Um, so we're looking into different systems and stuff. And as we go along with that, I'll obviously give you information with that. Um, I think that is it, kind of a lot, but any questions?
Um, and maybe ignore it, how long do those POS, POS systems last?
We've had ours since two thousand thirteen. And another reason why we have kind of talked about this is because I called Restaurant Manager and they have no updates. So for right now, for instance, I have to insert every invoice. Um, so I have to type in every single product, every invoice, and it takes a long time. Um, and with this new system, we could just scan the invoice and everything pops up. And it tells us like how many ounces we have exactly. It'll tell us, for instance, like with food, and this will be liquor too, but like, um, say we have ten pepperoni pizzas, it'll tell, it'll, every time we sell one, it'll limit, the number will go down. So then that'll be very helpful to, uh, easier to do orders every other week, so.
But, but what I'm asking, how long do they last? So they're having like a normal computer.
Life expectancy.
Yeah, life expectancy of it, like, you know, like a nor, a normal computer, you can get one and it's six months, might be out of date, right?
It lasts as long as your technical provider wants to service it. And we know that from LETG. Um, your, the end user is at the mercy of the technical companies and what they want to do. And like Becky indicated, they, they're stopped doing updates and they basically want you to buy every product or go somewhere else. Um, and also too with audit requirements, you know, and having this kind of what Becky spoke on is this live, more live inventory, be able to like really get a snapshot every day of where inventory's at. The auditors have indicated that that's gonna be good for a couple of reasons. One, we'll be able to do a lot better reporting at the end of the year, uh, to get where our inventory levels are at. And then two, we'll have a lot better understanding, um, that if there's breakage, theft, be able to monitor it a lot better. So this system, I think it's well needed for this industry, um, so, and like, you know, using four systems now and Becky is, I commend her because I wouldn't have the half the patience she did and working with some of these companies just to get basic information. So, um, it's definitely time to move forward and get somebody else.
When do you see?
Um, I just had a proposal today, but I didn't wanna obviously bring it forward. So I was gonna give that to Dan tomorrow and then I have another meeting on Thursday afternoon with another company. Um, and those two were recommended by a couple of different bar owners and managers in the area, so.
So you're gonna go from four to one?
Yes, 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 so it, you don't even know. Dan does. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be very, very, very good, so. So yeah, I'll keep everyone updated on that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
All right, police report, Chief Carl's room.
Okay, so the monthly activity report for February, we had a hundred and ninety-seven calls or incidents handled, um, three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight miles patrolled, and we made five arrests. Um, so comparison to last year, we're up about thirty-nine percent in calls and up about twenty-four percent, uh, miles patrolled. Um, some updates for you, um, staffing. Hopefully after tonight, we'll be at our four, uh, four out of four full-time staff. Um, we're sitting at six out of seven part-time positions filled right now, so we're doing pretty good. We also have two officers that are hitting some pretty big anniversaries this month, which is unheard of for part-time officers. So on March first, um, Officer Kevin Huber hit twenty-five years of part-time service with the City Police Center. And tomorrow, actually, uh, March fifteenth, Sam Ranta will hit his fifteen-year mark, uh, part-time. The police department, which is.
That's unheard of.
Unheard of, I mean, I don't know anybody in the county that has anybody that's lasted that long, so.
That's unheard of.
Yeah, that's awesome, I'm glad to have him. Um, I know we've been talking about body cameras. Uh, I have quotes, requests out with Axon and Motorola for now. Ideally, Axon is the, probably, probably the way to go, but, um, like we talked about, our in-car system is Motorola right now, so we'll have to figure that out.
And as I recall, if, I recall that Axon has a, basically a transcription component to it, which I think is absolutely essential.
Right, right, so. See what that.
Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna ask, uh, has there been any talks with the county on what they might be?
Have not heard any updates from the sheriff's office. The county has Motorola, but.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's Axon.
No, they don't.
With our, we're like. Yep, yeah. Like we talked about, our record system, LETG is potentially going away and we, it could be two months from now, it could be two years from now, we don't know. So I know the sheriff's office is looking at record systems. And I've heard that Axon has their own record system, so that might be a potential option, so. If they have Axon record system, we'd probably look at it, the Axon camera system, just so everything syncs nice and easy.
Chief.
Yeah.
So the body cams, I, I don't know, but I've heard that the governor, some of that money he wants to dedicate to law enforcement to get body cams and different things. Have you heard that, is that still, or?
I haven't heard anything about the body camera funding. I was just gonna touch on something about radio funding that I heard, but I haven't heard anything about body cameras. But I don't really pay attention a lot to that stuff, so. It's possible I missed.
You're not following all the bills?
Right, right. So yeah, that's probably be, hopefully by next meeting, we have a general idea of what we're looking at for cost. Um, just gonna go over some other things that we're looking at upgrading this year possibly. Um, like I said, we still need a few more radios, I know we got approved by three last year. I'm adding a fourth full-time officer, it's gonna make it kind of difficult. And then, um, the part-timers have had some issues with the older radios. Mel, the dispatch supervisor, sent out an email about some state grant money or s, some sort of state funding. I think they have like a hundred and fifty million dollars or something they're looking to spend on radios for, uh, police departments throughout the state, so hopefully we can get some. And that would include like in-car, the mobile radios and the portable ones, so.
Would that be for all, for all employees or?
They wanted a. Yeah, they wanted a number of how many we need to replace. So I think I told them we need like eight portables and two mobiles and, um, we really should have like a base radio back in our office, so. If our portable radio for some reason can't get reception, then we still.
Honestly, those old radios, uh, the old portables aren't safe.
No.
They literally, there's times that you can hear dispatch, you key up. They literally, there's times that you can hear dispatch, you key up and it just beep beep beeps and shuts down.
And they were bad when I started in two thousand and nineteen, so.
So is the county possibly looking at ceding this grant funding and they want to know all the municipalities' needs?
I don't know the details.
But that's yet to be worked out.
The person might know a little more about that. It was brought up at a fire chief's meeting or something like that.
That's fine.
Yeah, um, we can get some more information on that. Um, other than that, I don't think I have anything else for you right now, so. Yeah, good.
Perfect. Anybody else have any questions for Chief Carl's room?
With hiring your fourth officer, do you see the part-timers having less hours? Or it's gonna be not as much of an issue with picking up or?
It'll, so that'll allow us to go to that full, full twenty-four hours. Right now, there's just a slight gap in the morning. But that'll allow us to work a full twenty-four hour, full-time schedule, other than the Saturday and Sunday day shift, so. Less relying on part-timers, yes, but, um, obviously there's still vacation and whatnot and sick days and stuff we gotta deal with, but. Like I said, we're sitting at six part-timers, so we haven't had any issues this year filling any shifts, so.
Any other questions? Chief Carl's room, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for the hard work.
All right, Public Works, Dan.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Um, just an update on the citywide cleanup. I talked to Jesse at LJP and he gave me a couple of dates to pick from. We're looking at either June seventeenth or the twenty-fourth, which is a Saturday, from eight to noon. There is a flyer in the packet, I don't know if you've seen that.
Yeah, this, apologize, this, this came in today from, from Jesse, that's why it was kind of a late add, but it goes, let's get some context of what we're talking about on the citywide cleanup. So that's on page thirty-four.
So if you wanna look through that, then there's what's accepted and what's unacceptable in there. I don't know if that looks good to you. I don't know if we want to take furniture and couches, that will take up more space.
Yeah, that was the only thing that Dan and I were talking about is on the acceptable items, if, if we wanted to get, just maybe get rid of couches and put that down to the unacceptable items. Took all along with mattresses and, and box springs. We thought couches would come back nicely and, and give us enough, enough room.
I guess that would be something for Dan, he would, he knows more on how they're gonna crunch down than, than we do.
They don't crunch down too good.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, but. Right, especially a pull-out or something, yeah.
It'd be a lot tougher, so that's up to what you guys think.
I'd just say take that off there.
Okay. And the county's having their, has, not hazardous, but the tires and the appliances the weekend before, that'd be what, June tenth? So they can take mattresses and that out there.
Do we want to keep this for Saturday, June seventeenth or the twenty-fourth? Or is, or did you make that decision already?
We have not.
No.
Shouldn't really matter to us.
And will you need help there from peoples?
Well, we, that, we, uh, my staff will do it or I don't know, Council on the Pass has volunteered, but that's up to you guys.
So another component of this is, is talking about funding and if we were gonna charge, um, talked a little bit last time. Uh, my, honestly, my recommendation is still not to charge, but just make sure that they've got some sort of valid, um, ID. I just think we're gonna just run into the problems of if you try to collect beforehand here at City Hall, um, you know, not, not everyone's gonna do that and they're gonna try to go down there. And it's a very small amount. I, we looked back and I think you're probably only getting anywhere a thousand to twelve hundred dollars in girl seats to pay for it. So for ease of use and easy use on staff, just to have Dan and his crew do it, I think we just take that component out of the mix and not charge.
I agree. Other than that, we're good.
Yes.
And it's just gonna benefit our, our, the neighborhoods in the center, so.
Yeah, we want to encourage people to get rid of their stuff and not have blight issues and so. So I think we'll just move couches down to the unacceptable items and then, uh.
Go for the seven?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. That way it keeps it someone close to the Leesour County as well if they have, if they're doing a big cleanup of the house or something and they have to go to both places, they can just set it aside for a little bit.
Yup. That'll work.
All right, is that all right? You all, is everybody okay with that? Saturday, June seventeenth.
Thanks for the work on this, Dan.
Thank you so much.
And then I want to make you alert of that we have been working with the county on a grant for sealing up well, old well number one, which is right out back here. And just letting you know that the grant was approved. So we've been in contact with Tine Well to get the ball rolling as far as getting that well sealed up. So we're working on that. And I don't know if you have any questions on that or?
Anybody else have any questions?
Just glad it's happening.
And then as far as the gate rink, that's closed. I mean, it's getting pretty warm. We kind of keep up on that. And as far as everything else, everything's just snow and hopefully that ends pretty soon, so.
Pool opens on a week?
They gotta clog the parking lot with the new, new snow though.
Yes, yeah.
You could use the snow for the water in the pool.
It's full of snow right now, so. But other than that, I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
Anybody else want to counsel? Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. All right, Leesour County Commissioner Updates, Mr. Preisler.
Thanks, Council. Um, a couple of quick things. One, just, uh, forewarned, uh, real estate tax bills are going out this week. So we'll see if folks call or not, but at least we know they're coming, so. Um, the, uh, other thing, I want to just give a quick update on, I know at the last meeting I talked about the Cordoba Avenue. So that's, we haven't gotten the bids back yet, but I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on how that's gonna get approached, okay? It's, uh, originally, you know, it was gonna be from ninety-nine going north all the way to, uh, County Thirty-two, you know, which is on north side of, of Clear Lake. The, um, that, that's still gonna happen, but the timing is gonna be a little different. And that's how it's gonna get bid is to really be in kind of two segments. So the city part of it, we'll come first, okay? So as soon as we can get bids, approve bids and so on, that will come first. Then the, the second stage will be going from then the north side of city limits further to the north. And part of that is that we've got to figure out how to, um, not sink into oblivion again in the peak that's north of town. Um, they did do borings there and that peak is over twenty feet deep. And so, um, they're gonna figure out a way to engineer it to kind of try and float literally that part of it. There is a way, I guess, that you can do that, that's successful, it's been used, so. But you also want to let that settle and see that it's actually gonna kind of hold before you're gonna completely repave it. So that may not get done until the fall and maybe even not completed until two thousand and twenty-four. Okay, but again, in-town will come first, okay? So that, you may see, okay, the thing stops, you know, on the north side of town, well, that's why, okay? So this, an update on that. Um, quick update on the govern- uh, Government Center is that the board did approve, um, at least going forward on the, um, getting final drawings to do remodeling at the Governor, uh, Government Center, uh, primarily on the second floor and then some on the third floor. Uh, cause most of that or a chunk of that is, is empty, it's about half empty between the two, um, with those. And so, uh, with that, I know a county administrator contacted, um, Dan to look at changing up some of the parking um, within the city to allow for more than just an hour or two of parking on a couple of stretches. Thank you for that.
You bet, already done, that's from my understanding.
I saw that, so, uh, appreciate that, uh, because during that remodeling, uh, process and this, that'll start on the twentieth of this month, so pretty quick. Um, the parking lots on the west side of the Government Center will be closed. Because they'll use that for staging, um, for basically doing the remodel work. Because everything is going to come out and in through a second floor window. Okay, on that side of the, of the building, okay? So that will be closed. The, the vision in the end though, and I think this comes kind of as far as what, um, it'll look like in the end, I should say, is not only doing the remodeling, but also to redo that parking lot and the retaining wall, cause that's in pretty bad shape. That's probably an understatement. And then the other piece that would go with that is to take that parking lot that's on that west side, bring it further north and then also have a sidewalk that connects up to the pavilion and also make that then handicap accessible, okay? So that's the vision on what would happen, so it would make that obviously more usable and we'd pick up a few more parking spots. But honestly, the trees that would be taken down, one of them you can about see through already. So it's not long for this world anyway, and so it's, we're gonna have to do something with those trees anyway. We'll lose a few, but they weren't gonna be long for this world anyway, so.
Are they gonna close that entrance too then while they're doing it or the entrance will be open?
I would guess the way I understand it, that that entrance probably will close once they get staged there because they literally would be kind of, they'd be really close to it as they're going in and out of that second story window and you really just don't want people there.
Something falling off on someone.
Yeah, and so, so then the new court handicap, um, entrance will come from the east. And then you would go take that sidewalk and then take that to the south and hit those elevators there to go, you know, where people would want to go, especially from a handicap standpoint. Um, and other than that, the public health building, um, is open and so that is all done. And then we're in the process of moving the environmental, um, uh, department, which is out, um, you know, on the south side of town, uh, near the county garage and moving them into the Government Center. And so they'll be on the third floor, that'll be, should be completed within the next thirty days or so. And then the next step there will be the highway department will move over into the Environmental Services Building. That is a wreck, the offices at the highway department and that's being generous and it's not handicap accessible and it needs to change. And so that will make that pretty much better for everyone, so that will be occurring here over the next several months. That's it, unless there's questions.
Any questions from the council?
Thank you. Thanks for coming in with these updates.
All right, next on to old business, discuss, uh, council members' seat vacancy applications and how we want to go about, uh, fillings. Um, as you can see, the next four documents in our packet, um, you can see the applications that we received. Um, we have four of them now. We can do one of two ways here. Uh, one, we can, you all, you should have gone through these already and, uh, we can be, find who we feel fits from this, or we can invite them in, um, for an interview process, our next council meeting, correct?
Correct.
City Minister. Um, I, I would think with what they had to say was in the questions personally and, um, we discuss now and not hold this up much longer.
And we, everybody knows everybody here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, my two cents, uh, one of these people was a former, um, city council member. Knows, be ready right, right away. Um, uh, they know how council works. Um, uh, can I?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, just gonna say, why don't you go ahead and say the board?
Uh, Na- Nathan Hints applied, um, so he's been a part of it. Uh, we have, uh, former Chief Farr, who also knows the council works and how things are done within the council. Um, Tom Barbara, uh, has lived in town for many years, uh, great guy. And Kelly McMillan, uh, business owner in town as well, so. Uh, I could, uh, ask any discussion of the council on where they would like to go with this.
Anyone feel strongly about, uh, an applicant that did apply for this position? Um, quite honestly, it's as simple as making a motion, uh, bringing it to the floor and if there's a second and a majority, um, win in the event of a tie, the mayor does have some mayoral powers in which he can actually vote twice, um, to beat the tie and then appoint. So that's an option, or like the mayor said, we can, we can bring this to the, the April council meeting and then do mini-interviews and then kind of go over the same, um, motion to select at that time after you bring them in.
I think those mini-interviews would be what they're saying.
Correct.
Yep. Correct, so.
Um, I just have one question, um, on Councilman Hines. Will he, do we know a date when he'll be moving out of the?
That's my issue too.
You know, I don't want to put him on there and he moves out.
It's up in the air. It's up in the air. They haven't broken ground yet. I don't know if there's any. I, I guess I can't, that's all I can say. I guess I don't know if anything else, um, and depending on how busy a contractor is, you don't know too, so how, how fast would it get out?
I just don't want to do it twice.
Right, that's what I was thinking too. And then when I was thinking, uh, on my, my thoughts on these, um, on the other three was with Bob and Tom, both recently be re- being retired. They're in my position where they're available anytime. I know Tom does go up north in the, in the winter or in the summer, you know, July or something. Kelly McMillan, he's a good guy, he's around here, he's business owner and I believe he does maintenance on, runs, runs the buildings and then stay-at-home dad takes care of the kids, so he's also available too. You know, for if something comes up during the day or whatever. And all four of them are good people, so now something was said and nothing was got done, right?
It's a tou- it's a tough, it's a tough selection, but.
It's something that's just gotta be.
You got, gotta be done.
We, we have a slot to fill and it needs to be filled, so. Essentially, we would need a motion on somebody.
Does anybody else have any comments?
I have another, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, but with the Kelly McMillan thing, that's, you know, getting the younger, I guess compared to me anyways, the younger people involved get it.
Come on.
I have no preference.
Jenny?
I am open. They all would be good.
Again, I would, uh, uh, Nathan has been on here, uh, before as well as, um, knows what's going on. Um, and again, Bob, I'd narrow it down to those two personally. All right, I'll make a motion to nominate Nathan Hints for the other seat. We need a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
I abstain, I'm not abstaining, I, uh, I just, I'm just nervous about if he decide, if he, if the opportunity comes and he's able to move out of town, whether going through this again.
Okay, so.
So we'll call in favor and then he'll call, not in favor, and then that's if you want to do it that way.
All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye?
Aye.
And?
Okay, so that's Stefan opposed, Scott opposed. And the state of Minnesota gives the power to the mayor.
Well, the, the mayor can either do a direct appointment or someone can nominate a second.
I'll nominate Bob Farr.
Oh, uh, we have a motion and we, we need a second?
A second, a second, Dan.
All right, we have a motion, a second to nominate Bob Farr. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So now, now we truly are tied up. Now, now you can make the direct appointment. If, if you wish to do a direct appointment, you can make a direct appointment.
I'll make a direct appointment of Nathan Hints.
So Mr. Hints would, uh, need to take the oath of office and he would be seated next month.
We'll craft that in a minute, saw that just went down, that's going to be tough.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'll craft that in a minute, saw that just went down, that's going to be tough.
I have a feeling I'll be reviewing it. Sounds good.
We have new business, uh, considering the Hiring Committee's recommendation to offer a full-time Public Works general maintenance worker position to Anthony Cordom. Do I have to read all, read, read through this?
No, this is just an, uh, internal memo, um, from the, uh, from the Hiring Committee that, uh, myself, Superintendent Dan Steinborn, um, as well as Hugh and, to the wrong one. And then, uh, Councilman, uh, Wires Warren, and that's who we, um, did the interviews on. Uh, he came out as, we interviewed for, he came out as the top selected, uh, candidate from the total of overall eleven applicants. And we, um, offered that, uh, from the, um, Hiring Committee, excuse me, offered that position at twenty-seven per hour and then in six months we'll give him a dollar pay raise upon a, uh, review. And that would be to the overall council to consider that recommendation, um, to approve that hire. So we just need a motion, uh, for that.
Uh, before that, I just want to say we had, it was a great, um, great, uh, interviews that we had. We had four great applicants, um, that we interviewed and it was, made it difficult for us, which was a great thing for us, so. All right, and, uh, now we'll take a motion to, um, consider the hiring of Anthony Cordom.
I make a motion to hire Anthony Coram based on the recommendation of the, uh, Hiring Committee.
A motion?
A second.
A motion and a second to hire Anthony Cordom. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, congratulations to Anthony Cordom. All right, uh, next, we have the, to consider the Hiring Committee's recommendation, recommendation to offer full-time police officer position to Mitchell Tolsmann.
Chief, you want to tee this one up?
Uh, sure. Um, so, um, this is filling the spot of now the hired Mr. Stefan here.
Yes.
So we've been, this job's been open since December, beginning of January. Um, we had talked about one applicant that, and to release from initial offer and to reopen the job. We had two people that were interested, mentioned he was already, he's a part-time officer, but had yet to start and received another offer. The gentleman had been laid to bill. Um, however, at the time of the deadline, we were not aware that he was even eligible for the job as he did not have, um, his post license eligibility, so. We made a decision to proceed as Mr. Tolsmann, being that he's already hired and transitioned smoothly.
One question I have, chief, is, um, um, that's awesome that we hired, uh, internally, um, so now we're, you're going to have to hire another part-time to fill that spot, or no?
Well, we have an open spot, um, just going to reach out to the other guy that applied and see if he's interested.
But it's not an urgency?
No, no.
Yeah, so he was originally in the first interviews for full-time.
Yep.
And we hired Alex. And we just asked him, do you want to work part-time? And he, because he got the second and he'd never even had time to work yet, he, on the road with us, with the department on part-time.
Got it.
All right, so we need a motion to, uh, hire, uh, Mitchell Tolsmann.
I make a motion to, um, hire for full-time police officer position, Mitchell Tolsmann.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to hire Mitchell Tolsmann as a new full-time police officer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, moving on, we have a resolution approving a county project within the municipal, uh, corporate limits. This is referring to the, uh, county, uh, county state aid highway eleven, which, uh, Commissioner Preisler previously, uh, talked about, uh, to happen in the city Police Center. Um, do we need any, do you have any more, uh, comments?
Yes, I've been working with Dave Teague, the county engineer, on that and this is just a boilerplate resolution to be able, like you said, to get permission to use state aid funding and work within a municipality. Um, indicated on the resolution is Exhibit A and like, uh, uh, Commissioner Preisler indicated, you can see on the new plans and specs that that, that is to go to the north end of the city limits on that section and that's all that this specific, um, plan lays out. So we'll just need a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-three D.
I make a motion to pass to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-three D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same time? Uh, letter D, um, which we added at the beginning of the meeting, and that is to, uh, about the proposed amendment change, or sorry, the amend, to amend Resolution number twenty twenty-three C, uh, titled Annual Appointments and Designations and to add Travis Christensen to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have any discussion on that? If there's not, we need a motion.
I make a motion to add Travis Christian in Planning and Zoning, uh, twenty twenty-three C.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to amend Resolution number twenty twenty-three C, uh, to add Travis Christensen to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Travis. All right, on to administration and other business. Um, we have Lee Su, the Lee Sauer County officials meeting is March twenty-ninth at six thirty. Uh, that location is now in Montgomery, correct?
Yep, at the American Legion and then it's actually March twenty-second.
Oh, March twenty-second.
Yep.
Sorry. All right, so if you can be there, awesome. If you're busy, well, you're missing out. All right, um, under letter B, special rec, uh, recognition for the Certificate of Excellence Award presented to the Lee Center Volunteer Ambulance, uh, Councilmember Scott, you, you want to go over this with us?
Yeah, sure. I am, uh, I'm on the commission for the ambulance for the, and I was on a tour with, uh, Stan Stocker, who's in charge of all this. And he showed me that they received this award and could be wrong, but I think he told me in southern Minnesota they only offered this, only seven EMSs had, or EMTs had received this. And I think that's pretty laudable, so I wanted to make sure we recognize an important asset in our community here. And also, to give a plug, you know, if any citizen out there is willing to or looking to volunteer for the EMT, they're more than happy to take you aboard and, show you what needs to be done. Um, it's one of those, uh, services that's provided that people don't really think about until they actually need it. But it, it does need to be manned or womaned by people for when that service is needed, so. I just wanted to put that out there. Um, I was really impressed with the tour that I got of the EMT building. Um, they've done a lot of work and they do a lot for the community and that building is pretty neat, the way they've kept it up. So I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge the job that our local EMT is doing.
They did a great job. They, they have a lot of dedication.
Yep.
And thank you for everybody. And thank you, Colin, for being there for that too, so. With that being said, um, I, we can then make a, have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?